We'd like to start the meeting now. Can everybody please take a seat? Thank you very much. Welcome to the May 20th meeting of the Hillsborough Board of Education. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 16, 2019, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Sure. Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Elwich-Howard?
Here.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Balsifer?
Here.
Dr. Fasson?
Here.
Mrs. Stacks?
Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
And Mrs. Haub?
Here.
I meant Dr. Harris.
Yeah, you got that straight.
Got it.
Okay.
Can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are accepting various pieces of correspondence that we received since our last meeting, which was only a week ago. And next for the Board President's Report, I'd like to forego that because we have two performances that are better than everything else we do around here, and I'd like to move to that as quickly as possible. And I'd like to apologize to the class that was postponed several times because of all the havoc that went on with the referendum and the results of the referendum. But we're so happy to see you here tonight, and we're really looking forward to your presentation. So with that, I'll introduce the Superintendent, who will introduce you.
Thank you, Madam President. We're very excited that every month we bring out our schools to showcase the great work that's going on throughout our district. Tonight, we have two schools, Amsterdam as well as Wood Fern. We're going to start off with Amsterdam. Dr. Malady is going to introduce our teachers as well as the students, and they're going to be showcasing their unique STEAM projects. And STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. Dr. Malady.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very excited to share with you our projects that our students have worked on this year. Amsterdam School decided that we wanted to try some new ways to make sure that we meet the needs of all of our children. So we looked for unique ways to give children more opportunities to have STEAM opportunities in the classroom and beyond the classroom. So right now, I'd like to introduce you to the team that put this together this evening. We have Mrs. Mandresia, who's our Reach teacher; Ms. Roy Aker, who's a computer resource teacher; and Mrs. Rebecca Barajas, who's our media specialist, and they work together to formulate this evening's program. So, well.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rebecca Barajas, and I'm the media specialist at Amsterdam. We had a really unique opportunity this year to work as a team to make sure that the kids not only got what they needed in the library, but would stretch their minds and develop those skills, building on research skills and technology, and creating an environment of project-based learning, and a STEAM environment. So they had a chance to really get in and get to do things all on their own. So I'm going to let them talk to you about all the projects that they did this year.
I'm a first grader.
This is just some of our slides explaining that what STEAM really is. It's a science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics base, where kids start out and they combine it all together, working as one, to create and solve problems. Project-based learning is where they really develop their own sense of the things that they want to study about, and the things that they need to learn about, and what that looks like to them. And the projects in the end are something they create based on the research and knowledge that they have. We create our lessons by working in a cyclical environment instead of linear, instead of giving them the steps to follow. We let them really take a look at it, ask questions, start to learn about it, realize maybe they aren't asking the right questions, go back and re-ask them, come back and start to build and create, and then improve on what they do. Now, we have our first student.
I'm a first grader. My name is Finn Holmwood. We read the book Not a Stick. This book was about a pig with a cool imagination. He pretended his stick was anything but a stick. He called them his "not a sticks." Then we used paper towel tubes and had to use our flexible thinking and imagination to figure out ideas for what our "not a tube" could be. We sketched our ideas on a planning sheet, then picked one idea to create. My butterfly had all the parts. It was a proboscis, and looked just like my plan.
Hi, my name is Cameron, and I'm in first grade. In first grade Reach, we read a book called McAnimals. In this book, the animals on a farm were taken away by a tornado. The tornado left a pile of scrap metal. The farmer created new McAnimals made from the metal. After we read the book, we got a planning sheet to create our own McAnimals out of Kynex or Legos. We planned how the animal would eat, move, protect itself, and learn about the world. After I was done planning, I made a butterfly with all my animal features with Kynex.
This is just one of the things we asked the students to do. We said, "Can you design A?", and gave them cards and pictures, and this is what they came up with. Just on their own, creating the things.
Hi, my name is Sachi, and I'm going to tell you about a project we did in second grade Reach called Not a Box. We read a book about a clever rabbit that created all kinds of interesting things out of a box. We talked about using skills like elaboration and flexible thinking. After that, we had to plan what we would make out of a box. Mrs. Mandresia and Mrs. Barajas let us pick from all different types of boxes to make something from our plan. I loved animals, so I picked a penguin. I used a shoebox and my imagination to create him.
Hi, my name is Ethan, and I am in second grade. We read a book called Balloons Over Broadway. This biography was about Tony Sarr, a creative man who invented the balloons for the Macy's Day Parade. We learned about the first balloon and compared to the balloons now. Our challenge was to make a book character for our own parade. We designed our balloon on a planning sheet and then created it. If we completed our balloon, we had to figure out a way to create it. If we completed our balloon, we had to figure out a way to hold it in place. The most challenging part, making a stand for the bottom of the balloon. I learned that it looks easy to make the balloon, but it was much harder than I thought. I had to stick to it and keep trying.
Hi, I'm Preston. I'm a third grader at Amsterdam School. I participated in the third grade Reach Cardboard Challenge. The cardboard challenge is a challenge that you have to make a game that's made of cardboard and other recycled materials. You can make up your own game, or like I did, you can modify a game to make it different from the original. I decided to make a four-sided basketball game with four hoops. I had to use creativity, elaboration, and problem solving to create this awesome game. The most challenging part was making the hoops out of hangers and tying the nets out of yarn. I was originally going to use weights to hold the structure in place, but I made the structure out of tall and thin cardboard boxes, and it turned out the boxes on the bottom kept us secure without the weights. Right now, I'm working on making room defenses with alarms made of snap circuits and tripwires.
My name is Zachary, and I am a third grader at Amsterdam School. After doing the Reach Cardboard Challenge, I was familiar with some materials that work well together and really wanted to make another game in the Creating with Cardboard Room. My dad and I decided to make a ring toss. Once the challenge was figuring out how to make the rings, but the biggest challenge was finding a way to attach the paper towel rolls to the board. We thought about and decided to use a strategy called a flange, where you cut strips on one side of the tube and then attach them to the base. It worked perfectly. My dad even had time to make a stand for his rings, so he didn't have to keep bending down. In the Figure It Out Room, we had water and vinegar in a plastic bag and added baking soda. You had these perfect timing when you dropped it to get the reaction I did.
Hi, my name is Amanda, and I'm in third grade. I'll be talking about STEAM night. When we were in the Figure It Out Room, there were stations like explosions with water, vinegar, and baking soda. When we went to the Engaging Room, there were games that kids in Reach made and coding activities. The last room was Creating with Cardboard. Me and my dad did the Cardboard Challenge, where we used boxes to make a dog that poops, which was the most challenging activity of the night. I had so much fun working on all of these challenges with my dad.
Hi, my name is Samara, and I'm a fourth grader. In library all year long, we have been learning about the ocean. We have learned how to research using a lot of different sources. We also learned how to write a hypothesis, prove it with evidence, and find the reason it worked. We did an experiment to discover why the zones of the ocean stay separate and how salinity works. We used different liquids that had different densities. The most dense liquid was the cornstarch. The least dense was the rubbing alcohol. We created driving questions to help us find the information for our research. Then we chose an animal from a zone to research and create.
Hi, my name is Connor. I go to Amsterdam Elementary School, and I am in fourth grade. I chose a creepy fish, the anglerfish. Do you know there is a little light on top of their head? That light is made of bioluminescent bacteria. That substance of bacteria creates the light. I have created a plan to make this anglerfish out of recycled materials. I am going to spend the rest of the year finishing my creation. Try to guess who taught me this: the all-time best librarian ever, Mrs. Barajas.
I didn't pay him to say that, I promise.
Hi, my name is Ruthwick, and I am going to talk about roller coasters and TNT. And by TNT, I don't mean the kinds that explode. Anyway, let's start. So the first couple of days, we learned about physics ideas such as acceleration, Newton's law of physics, and potential and kinetic energy. And then we Skyped with a real roller coaster engineer who talked about how they worked. Once we were done learning about how roller coasters worked, we started to build, and for me, it's kind of easy because I do stuff like that. First, we made rectangles out of paper, and then attached them together to make rectangular prisms. Then we made tracks that went straight and went in two directions. We created funnels, loops, and things that went around the base. Once we were done, we tested it out using a marble, and here are some pictures of when they raced.
We had a really fun and exciting year, and all of our students did a really amazing job.
Thank you very much, young engineers. And now, next up, we have some folks from Wood Fern Elementary School. And typically, I would introduce the principal of Wood Fern, Mr. Kerrigan, to introduce our teachers. But tonight, Mr. Kerrigan is actually graduating from Rutgers University with a degree as Doctor of Education. So tomorrow, he'll be known as Dr. Kerrigan. So here are our fourth graders, led by Mrs. Stapleton, who's going to share with us their research that they're doing on the Revolutionary War. Let's cue that up.
Hi, I'm Karen Stapleton.
And I'm Stephanie Zinnman.
And we are fourth grade teachers at Wood Fern Elementary School, and we are here tonight to highlight the amazing work our students have done.
So earlier this year, when our principal, Mr. Kerrigan, asked us what our class could present for spotlight on students, we knew instantly what we wanted to pick.
At that time, our students were delving into the nonfiction skill of reading, nonfiction, and writing informational reports specifically connected to American history.
The amount of dedication, perseverance, and creativity our students put into this unit was amazing.
Here are our amazing students, who are excited to finally share our project with
Hi, I am Araw from Miss Stapleton and Miss Zinnman's fourth grade class at Wood Fern Elementary. We are excited to be here tonight to tell you about our literacy project. The units that we worked on were called Reading History and Bringing History to Life. We learned about the importance of comprehension of nonfiction information, especially related to reading history and the American Revolution. We also learned how to turn our notes, reading into notes, and our notes into knowledge, so we could write informational reports. Here's Anika to continue.
During the first weeks of this project, we read lots and lots of nonfiction about the American Revolution. Miss Stapleton and Miss Zinnman taught us little tricks to use when reading this genre as we practiced taking notes. We also learned how to determine what was important versus what we found interesting. Here's Vanessa to tell you more.
We learned how to structure our notes to help us with organization. We learned how to gain information from good old faction books, but we also zoned in on the Internet. We found information from websites and articles online. We even had a guest speaker, our principal, Mr. Kerrigan, who came in and delivered an amazing discussion about how the war was fought, spied, and Saratoga. Now here's Anna to tell you more.
We discovered that primary sources are extremely important when researching and learning about history. We viewed illustrations and read journal entries. We looked over original documents to gain a firsthand perspective of people living at the time. We learned how to zoom in and find details that were not obvious at first glance. Here's Colin to tell you more.
Once we had enough information from our reading and writing, I mean, wait, from our Reading History unit, it was time to start typing and creating our information report and writing workshop. We used Google Docs to input our information. We created a four-chapter booklet that included sections on the roads to the revolution. We picked a subtopic to focus on, mine was spies. We put ourselves in soldier or colonist's shoes and wrote historical fiction journal entries. And finally, we wrote a persuasive essay about why our topic was so important to the American Revolution. Here's Dabby from Ror info.
Once we created our report and had our critical information typed, we were ready to move on to the next step. We organized our information by chapters. Next, it was time to take it up a notch and add nonfiction text features. We searched the Internet for the best primary source illustrations and pictures, relevant maps and timelines. We dropped in these images and worked on arranging them to fit our subheadings and chapters. These elements really gave our final published pieces a flair. Corinne will tell you more.
Miss Stapleton and Miss Zinnman always make sure we have different ways to show that we've got it, that we understand, that we know what we're doing. So they gave us an awesome project to go along with our research. We got to create either a poster or diorama at home. We got the idea to create dioramas from a story we read in class. Here's Anya to tell you more.
For the final part of this literacy project, we each created the top five things to know about, slide shows using Google Slides. After all that we learned, we had to narrow down the facts and information to pick the five most important and interesting facts about our topic. We got to show off our digital media skills by adding animations and GIFs to our creations. Finally, we narrated our slides with the help of an app called Screencastify. With the additional help of Mrs. Mestowski, our computer teacher, we added voiceovers, enhancing the content of the slides with our explanations. Here's Emma to give more information.
The final part of our Reading and Writing History project was to have our American Revolution Expo Day. Along the way, we got to share bits and pieces, but on this day, we got the chance to share our full written reports, our visual presentations, and our top five slides. It was cool to see each other's book, even if we had the same subtopic. The reports were all very different and reflected each person's individual style and personality. Here's Isabella to wrap it up.
For this project, we did an unbelievable amount of work. Miss Stapleton and Miss Zinnman constantly guided us, coached us, and even pushed us sometimes to deliver our best. After this project, we really know how to read history, how to write an information report, and how to use technology to show our understanding. After hearing about all of our hard work, we want to show you one of our finished products. We will watch one of our top five slide shows. Thanks for letting us share with you tonight.
Hi, I'm Vanessa, and I'm going to tell you about the top five most important facts to know about the Battle of Bunker Hill. Fact five: General Howe's plan didn't work. General Howe was a bad general in the first place, and he worked for the British. He sent his British troops up Bunker Hill, and then the British troop ran right into America's gunfire. Then he tried his plan again, and it still didn't work. This is why his plan didn't work. Fact four: The Americans got to the hills first. The Sons of Liberty did some spying on the British and found out that they had planned to take Bunker Hill and Breed's Hill to bomb on the Americans. The Sons of Liberty told the colonists the news, and the colonists packed their things. When the colonists got to the hills, they were the first, and British wasn't there, so they started to build their tent. Fact three: British won the battle. The British lost a lot of soldiers, but won the battle only because the colonists had to retreat. The colonists had to retreat because they ran out of gunpowder, so it was either retreat or lose all their men. The Americans would have won if it weren't for running out of gunpowder. Fact two: The battle didn't take place on Bunker Hill. There were two hills next to each other, Breed's Hill and Bunker Hill. The colonists accidentally built their fort on Breed's Hill and not Bunker Hill. The battle was on Breed's Hill because the colonists built their fort on Breed's Hill. The battle was supposed to be on Bunker Hill, that's why it's called that, but it's not. And the number one most important fact was the colonists proved themselves worthy to fight. Technically, we would have won if we didn't run out of gunpowder, and we almost beat British. We killed a lot of their men, like 1,000 soldiers and 92 officers. So in war cases, we would have won, but we had to retreat. And thanks for watching.
Let's give a big round of applause to all of our students and our teachers. They did a great job. Weren't you impressed with how well-spoken they are in front of hundreds of people tonight? Let's give them another round of applause. Great job. At this time, I'd like to ask the Board for a brief five-minute recess, so the kids can pack up with their families, head on home, and the Board can thank them for their time here.
Okay, we'll have a five-minute recess. Thank you all for coming, really appreciate it. Okay, everybody, I'd like to restart our meeting. Okay. Now, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Schiff, who has a presentation on courtesy busing.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mahmood, our Business Administrator, to share with you where we are in our courtesy busing, the reduction of courtesy busing as a result of the referendum defeat. Mr. Mahmood.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. So yes, Board members and members of the public, we presented to the Operations Committee on Wednesday, May 15, our proposal to meet the revenue that we booked for the reduction in courtesy busing in the district. And what we wanted to do tonight is, two things, we wanted to introduce it to the full Board, because the full Board wasn't at the Operations Committee meeting, so they can see what the intention is moving forward with courtesy busing. Also, that we did have an opportunity to meet with the police chief and the town administrator to talk about courtesy busing as well. So we got some ideas from them, and what we'd like to do tonight is, Mrs. Bennett is here from our Transportation Department, and she's going to go through a presentation with you, and hopefully, after the presentation, if there are questions, we can address it, concerns. This is our first presentation publicly, so it's anticipated that we'll have other inquiries after tonight, and we'll be happy to answer those as we move forward. So, Ms. Bennett, if you're ready, I think we can start with the presentation.
Okay, so courtesy busing. I think a lot of people don't understand what courtesy busing actually is. So the definition, according to the New Jersey State Regulation and Administrative Code, states that whenever in any district there are elementary school pupils who live more than two miles from the public school of attendance, or secondary school pupils, which means high school students, nine through 12, live two and a half miles from their public school, we shall have to provide transportation outside of those boundaries. So again, K through eight is two miles, nine through 12 is two and a half miles. The words "remote" is anything beyond that. Courtesy busing is anything within those two and a half or two miles, and that's what we're looking at tonight. We're targeting the expansion areas for high school, beginning in the 2019-20 school year. We're going to start with west of Route 206, north and including Oxford Place, and then east and including Ernest Strife, and we can show you a map of that in a little while. And then also, we're expanding to south of Triangle Road, east of Beekman, and then west of 206. So that'll be a big block in there that we'll also be expanding to. Map's a little hard to see, but it's from basically Triangle down, between Triangle 206 and Beekman down, and then going further a little bit south. And although we came up with safe walking areas, and they're all within two and a half miles of the school. We did meet with the police, and they gave us a couple recommendations. They don't want any crossing guards at Amwell or New Amwell because they are controlled intersections, and high schoolers already cross here now. We will be busing students who live on Marshall, north of Amwell and Prow Road, because the students, we feel, are going to try to cross Amwell where there is no controlled light. And there will be no crossing of Otten Road or Triangle Road. For the middle school, we're just going to expand it slightly to the two miles. We're going to stay in the same radius from 206 to Otten Road and between Amwell and Triangle. Crossing guards are already in place at New Amwell and South Triangle, and on South Triangle by the Triangle School. By expanding this slightly, it's going to make up for some of the loss from the walking area eliminated at the suggestion of the Hillsborough Police. Again, this is a map. If anybody wants to look at this on Google Maps, it's a little hard to see from back there. But again, that's up to two miles. But again, that's up to two miles, all safe, uh, walking corridors also. Okay, our current hazardous bus route criteria policy, um, there is for the elementary and intermediate schools, we have some. No student shall walk across a roadway on which the posted speed is 35 miles per hour, and no student will walk across 206, Triangle, or Otten Road. That's current for middle school. Right now, we do not have any courtesy busing at the elementary or intermediate schools. At the high school level, our current policy says, no student will walk across a roadway on which the posted speed is 35 miles per hour or greater, unless there is a crossing guard or a, or a controlled intersection. No student will walk across 206 or Amwell. Route southwest of the corner of Amwell and Pleasant View. This policy will be changed with the implementation of our reduced courtesy busing at the high school level only. And with the expansion of the non-busing for high school and middle schools courtesy bus students, anticipated savings for next year are $259,000. Savings can be increased in future years by eliminating courtesy busing at some of the lower grade schools.
Ms. Bennett, if you could just hang out if board members have questions, we can put them there.
Okay, are there any questions, Lorraine?
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Um, the $259,000 savings, does that take into account any loss of, uh, the stacking of the bus routes?
Yes, it does. It takes some of it. That's why we're estimating right around the 250, 259.
Okay, so that work has already been done to ensure that that is...
Yes, which we have some tiers that are now triples, that'll go down to doubles, and they're gonna, everything's gonna have to be rebid.
Okay, and so, we will have students crossing Otten Road and Amwell Road coming to the high school.
They won't cross Otten Road. They will cross New Amwell and Amwell.
Well, I mean, they can cross...
They could cross, but they don't have to.
Right.
They can cross at the high school, where the controlled lights are.
Okay, so if they cross, um, if they're coming from the northeast corner of, um, Amwell and Otten, so where the, the assisted living center, the senior center is there, you would, you think that they're going to cross over Amwell Road to get to that corner, and then cross that way?
Yeah, they'll, they'll cross either way there, and the police did look at that with us, because we had originally said we would like a crossing guard there, and they said there's no need for that.
That it's a controlled light. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay.
Judy?
Chris?
If we could go back, I'm trying to look at the slides back here. I thought at one point, there was a slide that said that currently, they do not cross Amwell. Is that...
Correct.
Okay. I'm assuming that's our policy, and we all recognize that's not the reality. Okay, so have we accounted for, at some point, do we need to account for the fact that the amount of busing provided isn't getting utilized, and is there a way to better estimate how much of the busing actually will happen? Because every time I, every morning when I drive down Otten Road, and I'm going by the high school to go to work, I see kids crossing Amwell. So clearly, some percentage are going to continue to walk. Is there a way to estimate that, or is that really not going to get us to a reliable position?
I, I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Bennett, I think that the, the analysis that we did includes, um, I mean, we could certainly try to get a feel for how many kids will cross that, and even though we were not, we were not there, uh, but it's something we can look at. I don't think we actually were able to measure it, uh, but it, it's something that I, I could see us actually looking at, but, uh, we'll take a look at that, I think, and Lisa, maybe we can just talk about that offline and see what that looks. The whole goal here was to try to minimize, um, as much as we can, with safety being a priority, and we get it. We, even the Police Department had, had recognized that the children do cross in areas that we are, um, we wouldn't want them to be crossing in, but we realize that the kids, bad weather, they're, they're going to kind of dodge it to get to school, and it's not something we recommend, but, you know, they, they rush to get to school, and we get it, but it is something that we're concerned about.
Well, and that's part of the reason I brought it up, because even on days where I would have thought, because of the weather, they'd have taken, but they're still walking, and so at some point, the reality, you know, needs to be accounted for if we can, if there's a way, a reliable way to do it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just make a comment?
I want to...
They're, they're not just walking because they live there, they're walking because there's insufficient parking, and they're parking up in there. So they are crossing the street because they, you know, they want to have access to their car, and we can't provide them full parking.
I understood, but I would think that those people are bussing, I mean, they, they could have taken a bus, so they don't have to walk to get their car.
Well, they actually could have, but I'm saying, I don't know that you're going to be able to capture every, all of the walkers, because they're not just residing there, they're actually coming and parking in somebody's spot that they know, in the apartments or somewhere else, that, since they, they can't get a parking space at the school.
You know, I was wondering if during the first week of this implementation, uh, could we have monitors or someone there for that week, so you can see how things are really running, and...
Yes, absolutely. Uh, uh, Ms. Eldridge Howard, the, the Police Department had, had already committed to that, um, that they would work with us, uh, so yes, uh, there would be extra coverage. The Police Department had, had indicated to us that they would work with us. Anything, something, something as new as this would be looked at, both from, from the, you know, enforcement side, as well as from the district side. So our anticipation is that if we move forward, which we will with the courtesy busing, there'll be a, a sense of extra coverage in the beginning, just to make sure that things are flowing the way they should be.
Are there any more comments? Jane?
Um, what about with these expanded routes, uh, what about in inclement weather with the conditions of sidewalks? Will, will be, well, is there any way we can enforce the sidewalks being cleared?
So, we, we did talk to the town about this. Um, there is no ordinance currently, um, that, that is enforceable in town, that, that would allow folks or force people to shovel within a certain period of time. Um, so, you know, that's going to be a struggle for us, because we're not going to be able to impose anything on, on the folks. However, we, we did talk about what we do currently, where there's bad weather, we try to get, you know, buses out and shuttle kids back and forth. We do that, um, we, we work with our contractors, um, so, you know, in extreme conditions, we'll, we'll work something out, because it's the safety of the kids, and the reality is, we don't want them on the street. So that's, that's what we're going to work and for, you know, we do it currently with the middle school.
Is that cost built into the savings?
Well, the shuttle, the shuttles, um, I think they, they kind of, the bus contractors work with us, um, they allow, um, they, they realize in that type of weather, so between our buses and the contractors, their, the minimum costs, um, so I'm not as worried about it, considering those conditions, weather conditions are extreme, uh, so between our buses and the contractors, we're able to make it happen. But there's, it's not a guarantee, though, Ms. Stats, that we'll be able to pick up every child. We just, you know, we go back and forth with a shuttle to ensure safety.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions, but I had some, um, additions, so I could hold off until later with the committee reports.
Do it now, sure.
Okay, so, um, thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Um, so what Mrs. Bennett has provided tonight is the recommendation of the majority of the Operations Committee. I was actually the minority, but before I explain the reasons why, I was not fully in favor of this, I will just kind of go through the other schools. So Mrs. Bennett had talked about Hillsborough High School, that we would expand to all courtesy busing, except as recommended by the police. Hillsborough Middle School will have a small portion that basically would be, um, expanded. Um, Otten Road Intermediate School actually is kind of off the, um, courtesy busing, because it would cross, um, Otten Road, and the police did not feel comfortable with that, so there would actually be no, um, just based on the location of Otten Road, there will be no courtesy busing elimination, um, and even, I believe, even if we were looking into the future, that would be the case. Is that correct? That we would almost never...
There was concern about putting a crossing guard across, um, four lanes and a, and a median.
Okay, right. And so then there are three, so then, if you go, we talked about the elementary schools. Of the six elementary schools, three actually could not have walkers, just based on their location, and those are Hillsborough Elementary, Sunnymead School, and Wood Fern. Now, um, there are three other elementary schools that are in more residential, there's, um, neighborhoods behind the schools, and those are Amsterdam, Woods Road, and Triangle Elementary. And so just, I, I'm sure you've all read the minutes, um, but just to kind of like expand upon that, um, my suggestion, and I think this was one of the proposals, um, is that for those three schools, that we do a trial, um, bus route. So for example, I'm familiar with Woods Road School, there's actually like a neighborhood right behind Woods Road School, all 25 miles an hour, um, roads, sidewalks, I believe in most of the areas, um, but very safe, and I felt that that could actually, if we implemented that as like on a pilot basis trial, to, um, see how it works, basically at the elementary school. Similarly, Amsterdam School does also have neighborhoods that are close by. I mean, I don't recommend, I'm not saying for this pilot idea to do for the full two miles, but like within a neighborhood where, you know, the child could walk to school for 10 minutes and be at school. And I'm not as familiar with Triangle Elementary, so I don't know, but I'm just familiar more with Woods Road School, so that was kind of the summary. But it was not supported by the majority of the board, of the committee, so that's the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Yes, I'd like to also recognize Ms. Bennett, who does a very difficult job in this district with very little gratitude from the public, and I'd just like to thank her for all of her efforts. It is, you know, we don't think about the minor miracles that happen in our school district every day, but I think one of them might be getting 7,300 kids to and from school in one piece, and, you know, it's not like we have 20 people working in the Transportation Office. We have Ms. Bennett, so thank you very much. Okay, well, I guess we took care of our committee reports. Four of us went to Legislative Day, um, which was down in Trenton. It was sponsored by the New Jersey School Board Association, and it gave us an opportunity to hear panel discussions with quite a few legislators, um, who stopped by, well, some of them were scheduled, and some of them just stopped by. And then there was a presentation by none other than Carrie Booker, who is the brother of Cory Booker, and also a policy advisor to the governor. So it was a very educational day, and it was also valuable in terms of an opportunity to network with other board members from other parts of the county and the state. And, uh, it was a really good program, and I thank my colleagues for attending. We had a good time. We carpooled Jean, Jane, and Ann, and myself, and it was fun and educational, so I thank everybody who went.
Can I just add, can I just add something?
Sure.
Um, Dr. Schiff prepared some information regarding, um, the challenges we're facing. So, um, Jean and I intercepted some of the legislators to give them that information and encourage them to, uh, help us out.
Intercepted was a very interesting word, but it was wonderful, because we did have like a one-pager on our current financial situation, and quite honestly, while our local legislators are very, um, aware and involved in it, people from South Jersey and North Jersey may not be as intimately aware, so it was a very good opportunity to corner those people and get them thinking about Hillsborough, so I thank you for doing that. It was great. Okay, we're up to comments from the board and the public. Uh, let's start with the public. Do we have any comments? We very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is right now, that you may speak about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. Uh, towards the end of the meeting, there's another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment, and there may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. With that, madame.
Thank you.
Actually, senora.
Senora, yes, senora. Sorry. Um, Elena Messeri, Hillsborough Education Association, teacher at Hillsborough High School. With your permission, can I give my committee report prior?
Absolutely.
Thanks. Um, okay, hold on. Almost every month of this school year, I've stood at this podium highlighting the amazing things that the members of the Hillsborough Education Association do, both inside and outside of the classroom. Tonight will be no different. Starting with, hold on. At Woods Road School, on April 12th, 2019, over 20 teachers hit the stage to join their excited students in the 20th Annual WRSHA Talent Show. The event was organized by Mary Beth Finerty and Jennifer Peterson. It was a huge success and a big fundraiser for the school. At Otten Road, pennies for patients raised over $5,000 for kids with cancer. A special thanks to Sylvia Scazari, Mary Beth Finerty, and Jennifer Peterson for their contributions this month. On Friday this past week, members of the Hillsborough Education Association continued their partnership with the Ark of Somerset County. We went to their group home on Ardsley Road and worked on beautifying their home, both inside and out. At the end of the evening, the Ark was so generous to provide us with pizza for dinner, and we were able to sit and talk with the residents and just spend some time with them. On May 31st, in conjunction with the great staff at Woods Road, the HEA will be sponsoring the Hope for Tomorrow event. Hope for Tomorrow event was born out of initiative to raise awareness of the resources available for the, uh, in the mental health community, for addictions, et cetera. We're really looking forward to being there and partnering with our colleagues at Woods Road, and we hope to see many of you there as well. On June 1st, the Hillsborough Education Association will be one of the main sponsors of the Hillsborough Hop, run by the YMCA. We will have many students and teachers running as part of their service to the children and service to the community. On June 1st, at the conclusion of the Hillsborough Hop, Borough Pride will be making its debut at the Health and Wellness Fair. Hopefully, you'll stop by. We will have the T-shirts, clings, magnets available to share with our community and highlight all the great things that are going on. I'd like to close by thanking all of my colleagues that have again sacrificed their time to be here tonight in a show of solidarity. This year on a whole has been a year of incredible sacrifice, but still we rise. It is my true hope that moving forward, we can work together to settle a fair and appropriate contract before the start of the 1920s school year, because although it should go without saying, we are worth it. We remain united. We remain engaged.
Kitty Ward, HEA, and I'm also the Chair of the Health and Safety Committee, um, of the HEA, which was a group that has representatives in each work site, and our mission is to continue the vital work of Tools for Schools, a committee that was at one time required by the state, but discontinued by the district when the state no longer mandated it. The Tools for Schools Committee brought together teachers, admins, and our maintenance and custodial staff to review the status of the buildings. It was through Tools for Schools where we would identify simple things to fix before they became a bigger issue. Since Tools for School has not met, our infrastructure and general building conditions have deteriorated. The committee asked, my committee asked, if we could meet with reps from Buildings and Grounds, a request that I have made to the Aramark supervisors for two years. Our goal is not to point fingers or complain, our goal is to understand the processes and roles that each department has, and how we can all best work together and help each other. Last week, I reached out to the individuals who are serving in that role currently, um, from, from our district, and they immediately responded back. And after a brief meeting, we were able to better understand the typical maintenance projects, how they're handled, things like filters, remediation to roof leaks, pest control, et cetera. We have began or started the shared vision and understanding, and that our representatives can understand and share with their buildings. This is the first time in four years that our members' concerns about health and safety are being proactively addressed, instead of reactively responded to, which is often more costly, and I look forward to the continued partnership. Thank you.
Hi, Jim Cox from Wood Fern School, and I'd like to congratulate Anthony DeLuca, who's serving as interim Building and Ground Supervisor, and Keith Guado, who is the interim foreman for the Maintenance... foreman for the maintenance. And what Kitty said is really all what they've been doing, and I've known Tony for a long time. He's really dedicated to this district. He knows a lot of people in town. He's got a good communication with everybody we work with. He's really working on a lot of different things. I've talked to him about different things of work, working on collaboratively to save overtime, save the district money, work more efficiently. And everything's working. He's putting in a preventive maintenance program that hasn't existed here, I can't tell you how long. We've had so many different managers. Everyone wants to do something different, and it's been a disaster with Aramark. Now, Tony's got a lot of work to do. There's still a lot of things have to be done. We're changing around. Iman and Kathy Schwab and myself, we've all been working to get this straightened out and get back on track. So Tony, thank you very much, and Keith is out there somewhere.
Hi, Amy Salinger, HEA Treasurer and teacher at Otten Road School. To say the 2018-19 school year has been a stressful one would be an understatement. Educators continue to be under attack for everything from pension funding to the cost of healthcare. Yet it seems like the ones who are quickest to judge and place blame are often misinformed and sometimes just plain wrong. While all of these things cause stress, the biggest impact for me this year came on April 15th, when it was finally made clear just how many people would be losing their jobs. Since then, those who were delivered the news have been on my mind every day. Will they be okay? Will they find a new job? Will they be able to provide for their families? I've also thought a lot about what caused the job loss to begin with. As with most problems, there is likely more than one cause. Factors like state funding cuts are certainly part of it, but I have to wonder if things like poor, long-term budgeting by this Board of Ed and those that came before also played a role. As I mentioned before, I find it hasty to simply pass blame and judge without the full picture and gathering as much valid information as possible. As the Treasurer of the HEA, I have to plan and submit a budget for approval every year. I also serve on county and statewide budget committees. I understand the amount of detail involved in budgeting, and I've seen many versions of how a budget can be presented. In trying to make sense out of the situation we are currently in, I, along with HEA President Henry Goodhue, have been going through the Hillsborough Board of Ed budget documents. Trying to decipher and look at how the funds are being distributed is quite challenging, not because I don't understand how to read a spreadsheet, but rather because the documents are not specific and it is very hard to tell what a line item actually means. For example, there are line items regarding leases that are listed as $0, yet we know they exist. We just don't know how to find them in this budget. In contrast, as a member of the committees I mentioned before, each line item is clear and states what the funding is for. I'm also a resident of Bridgewater, and when I look on the Bridgewater-Raritan School District homepage and click on their budget information, they have a user-friendly version as well as the actual document adopted by their BOE for the 2019-20 school year. The Bridgewater version is clear and easy to understand. For example, if you search the word salaries on the Bridgewater adopted budget, it shows up 153 times. And from there, you can see how much is being budgeted by school, by position, and by subject. In contrast, when you search Hillsborough's user-friendly budget, the word salaries appears five times. I am truly trying to get a clear understanding of the Hillsborough budget to help me make sense of all the cuts and to see if there are any other areas where cuts could have been made instead of staffing. The amount of frustration I have while trying to do this is high, and it shouldn't be. There should be a version of the budget available to all that is easy to interpret and understand. When one of the 50 people asks if there is anything else that could have been done with the budget, I want to be able to give them a completely honest answer.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, as well as Laurel Drive. Our members' profound disappointment and frustration regarding impasse and your decision to cut 50 staff positions from the 2019-2020 budget has been no secret. These cuts, coupled with the decision not to fill the positions vacated by retired educators, leaves Hillsborough's students short-changed and our district forever impacted. For years, Hillsborough has prided itself on providing an excellent education for our students, and our schools are a vital reason why our community is consistently named among the best places to live. At the April 29th board meeting, we questioned the board on how monies are budgeted and the ability to transfer surplus to reinstate jobs. This was affirmed, but there were still questions and rebuttals of this fact by some members. To further shed light on this important issue, we requested the unpublished budget, as we are permitted to do by both statute and practice. This request was submitted 12 days ago and thus far has remained unfulfilled. Why has this request taken longer than an Oprah request to fulfill? Is there information in there that would support our position that there is surplus that could be used to save jobs and ensure that class sizes remain at educationally acceptable levels? These questions are not rhetorical. We know the answers to them. But allow me to provide some insight into what we have found. While we have not been given the unpublished budget, we have been given other budgetary documents. Using these documents, we've gone through your proposed spending, your actual spending, and your line item transfers. We have identified areas of excess, outrageous line items tied to things, not to staff or students. We have also begun to find areas that could easily carry surplus, yet you would have us believe that there is nothing that can be done to save any of the jobs that were cut. We've been told at numerous board meetings that you and the administration are doing everything possible to protect our students' education and save jobs. Along with your budget, your actions have demonstrated otherwise. Leading up to the referendum, the community was told that 50 jobs would be lost if it failed. You cut 51. We were told that you were imposing fees, cutting back on busing, and exploring other options to ensure that cuts would have the least impact possible on students. You've imposed these financial demands upon our community, our students, and in fact upon our members, yet you still cut 51 jobs, most of which directly impact students. How is this possible? Were your projections leading up to the referendum grossly inaccurate? Or are you undertaking these actions, yet still cutting jobs and bankrolling funds and breakage to build surplus at the detriment of our students and members? Our budget shortfall can be blamed on many things, but it cannot and should not be blamed on our students or our members, nor should they be expected to provide the revenue to correct it while also suffering its negative impact. Your poor planning and practice of balancing budgets on the backs of our members at the expense of our students is reprehensible. Our current situation is a result of years of misplaced district administrative priorities as well as current and former board's unwillingness to plan for the present while keeping a keen eye on the future. It's time for an honest conversation and total transparency, both of which seem to be lacking, as evidenced by the community's distrust of the referendum and more recently by your silent refusal to provide us with the information we have requested. There is time to right this wrong. It is simply unconscionable that the board would willingly choose to erode the opportunity to maintain our great public schools when there are other options. Vote to transfer funds. Restore as many positions as possible and stop this nonsense once and for all. Take actions that reflect our community values of honesty, integrity, and a total commitment to keeping Hillsborough's schools among the best in the state. The charge of your position demands it.
Hi, my name is Doriane Pelagi. As you can see by my shirt, I'm a member of the HEA, but I'm also a parent. So my question comes from my parent role tonight. With regard to the courtesy busing and expanding those areas, I was confused. Maybe I just didn't quite get it. But the busing with HMS, wouldn't that require, wouldn't most students be required to cross at one of the intersections at least to get to the school? And I didn't know if that was addressed or not. I may have missed it.
Yes, that's where, you know, they're going to cross Amwell, and that was the change in policy, and please don't make this cross Amwell.
Okay. And then the other thing is...
Just to clarify, excuse me. You're asking about middle school crossing?
Middle school.
Yeah, this is New Amwell and Triangle. There's already a crossing guard that's there.
Oh, okay.
For those. So we're looking at picking up just south of New Amwell, I believe, Ms. Bennett. Am I correct? And a small carve-out that currently is bused would be walked, but there is a crossing guard right at that intersection.
Okay.
We actually have two crossing guards currently in the district. One is at the corner of New Amwell and South Triangle, and the second is right in front of Triangle Elementary School.
Right in front, okay. And then with regard to special education students that currently receive busing, would any kind of, would that affect them in any way?
Yeah, if in a child's IEP requires busing, they'll get busing for it. If it doesn't require busing because their needs don't require it, then they would walk.
Then they can walk?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Doug Bayless, Huff Lane, Hillsborough. One question and one recommendation. So are there plans to reinstate the Communications Committee? And second of all, I have, I think there'd be three great people for that committee: Dr. Sasan, Mr. Gillette, and Mr. Gio. So that's my question or comment.
Yes, actually, we do have our Communications Committee. It's chaired by Dr. Harris, and we'll be meeting shortly.
Okay.
Mrs. Hoss, there's a question from the audience about whether public comments at this point needs to be on the action agenda or can it be on, it must be?
Yes, the public comment on other than the action agenda takes place at the end of the meeting. Okay. Is there any other public comment on the agenda? All right, we can move to our agenda then.
Thank you, Madam President. We have our, this is our mid-year organizational meeting where we're going to review a lot of the new contracts that are going to be coming up, including designation of signatories, designation of official newspaper, deposits for school funds, auditor, board attorney, architect of record.
Could we hang on just a second and let this clear out?
Sure. I'm sorry.
It's not your fault.
No, it's all right. I want to make sure everybody can hear. All right, thank you. So we'll, every year at this time, we have our organizational meeting where we re-up all of the, of certain contracts and other responsibilities. So we are approving designation of signatories as listed, official newspapers, depositories for school funds, auditor, attorney, architect of record, school physician, treasurer of monies, insurance broker of record, school warrants, approval of all board policies and job descriptions, as well as school district curricula, field trip destinations, and the strong model for evaluation. Also, that we will be participating in the NJSIA Skylines Conference. Affirmative action entitled, Entitled Nine Coordinator is Dr. Lisa Antounas. Our 504 officer is Ms. Jessica Smedley. And our liaison person for homeless students is Mr. Mahmood. Also, Board Secretary-approved and attendance officer is Bonnie Corso.
Okay. I'll take a motion and a second for items 9.1 through 9.21.
Same with.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments on these appointments?
I have a just minor question. When does this take effect? Like as of today or tomorrow?
July 1st.
July 1st. So that means our centric benefits consulting will take place on July 1st?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, just for the public to understand, these are annual contracts?
Yes.
That go with the school year. We have two reorganizations because our elections were moved to November and our board terms start in January. However, most of our professional contracts, et cetera, et cetera, relate to the school year, so we need to do this in time for that. So, okay. I'll take a roll call if there are no other questions.
Sure. Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Gio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, to affirm the HIB list, as well as approve staff for the measurement of development of English language testing.
Okay. I'll take a motion and a second for items 10.1 through 10.3.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments on the education agenda? No? Roll call.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Gio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources to approve the retirements of Jeanette Bauer, one of our academic support instructors at ARIS. She has been with us since September 1 of 1997. And Joe Cron, who's a third-grade teacher at Amsterdam, who has been with us since September 1 of 1993. And we thank both of them for their dedicated service to the children of Hillsborough Township. Also to approve revised leaves of abscences, approve appointments as listed, also approve change and transfer in assignments as listed, so approve reappointments, and approve additional appointments as listed for teacher, school nurse, and to pre-approve extra-period coverage, to approve extra-period coverage, to approve the submission of the proposed comprehensive equity plan for 2019 through 2022. Also to approve renewal of non-certificated staff for 2019, 2020.
Okay, I'll take a motion and a second on items 11.1 through 11.10, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. Second. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Real quick, I hate to be picky, but I believe you read the last item incorrectly, Dr. Schiff.
I did.
I believe you read it as non-certificated staff. It should be non-tenured certificated staff.
Non-tenured, excuse me.
Just to make sure we're talking about the right people.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, good catch. Any other comments or questions? I'd also like to acknowledge Joan Cron, who was my son's third-grade math teacher and a wonderful teacher at that, and as well as an EMT in our town, who does a lot of community service, as many of our teachers do. So I'd just like to wish her the best in her retirement. So, okay. No further questions? Roll call.
Surely, Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Gio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The HIB review list, as well as suspension reports, are available for board review. May the floor be open for second public commentary, Madam President.
Okay, this is it. Comments from the public on any subject? Please state your name and address. One moment? One moment? Yes, Chris?
I say this only because I suspect what some of these ladies and gentlemen might wish to speak about, that we remind them that we should...
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Saussant?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motion under the area of operations to approve the monthly bills.
Okay, that's a real short operations agenda. May I have a motion and a second, please? So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. You guys got to be fast. Okay. Any questions or comments on the bill list? Seeing none? Roll call.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Saussant?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motion under the area of operations to approve the monthly bills.
Okay, that's a real short operations agenda. May I have a motion and a second, please? So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. You guys got to be fast. Okay. Any questions or comments on the bill list? Seeing none? Roll call.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Saussant?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hoss?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The HIB review list, as well as suspension reports, are available for Board review. May the floor be open for second public commentary, Madam President.
Okay, this is it. Comments from the public on any subject? Please state your name and address. One moment? One moment? Yes, Chris?
I say this only because I suspect what some of these ladies and gentlemen might wish to speak about, that we remind them that we should not be naming staff members individually as they bring issues to the Board. Because we cannot be discussing individual members at a Board meeting.
We're aware, they know who they are.
Absolutely. And it's not about that. We collectively, as the parents of our developmentally disabled children, wanted to discuss and bring to you as Board members, an event that happened...
If you could please state your name, I'm sorry.
Deborah Eisenberger, Deborah Myers-Eisenberger, Westcott Road. We wanted to discuss with the Board and share an event that has disheartened us collectively regarding the senior prom that took place on May 17 at the Brunswick Hilton. There were 11 of our developmentally special needs students that were very excited to go to prom in their senior year. We, as parents, planned it. We rented a limousine. We dressed them up. We made them feel as normal and typical as we could. We are very disheartened to have to tell you that they were rounded up with, all of them, 11 of them, before they finished their dessert, before king, prom, queen, and last dance, and they were made to leave against their will, even though we had made arrangements with the limousine driver to have them picked up 11 o'clock or a little after, because the prom went until 11:30. Instead, our children on their senior prom did not come home happy and feeling like a senior prom 17-year-old should. They were humiliated and herded out like sheep. I wanted all of you to hear us and to remediate what happened to our children at their senior prom.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Trusky. I live on Gateway Boulevard in Hillsborough. I have to follow up what Deb said, that a collective group of us helped plan and create just a brilliant evening for our students. We had a pre-prom party. The kids got in a limo. We had told them all they would be picked up at 11:15. You know, we allow the district to kind of help them leave a little bit early. It's a nice thing to do. And the limo driver was instructed to do just that, to pick them up at 11:15. Instead, he was met by someone representing the district to tell him that he should be back 35 to 40 minutes earlier than the parents had planned, earlier than he was instructed, and earlier than the students had all been prepped and planned. Our students typically need to know from their parents what to expect in an evening. At this table, there were nine developmentally disabled students and two neurotically developing students. My daughter Lily Doyle is 18 years old, and she's classified for special education. She wanted to come tonight and speak on behalf of herself, actually, and her peers. She was incredibly traumatized. All of our students exited the limo that night absolutely bereft, and it was heartbreaking and sickening for those who were responsible for ensuring our students were well taken care of, that their voices were heard, their rights, their legal rights met, were not denied, and yet they were. And yet, this end of this night on this senior prom, it was robbed from them. She attended, Lily attended with her neurotypical 16-year-old peer. I want to read her letter to you. She wrote her own statement. So I am going to read that to you now. Her name is Emily Valentino. She does not go to school in this district. Hello, Hillsborough. My name is Emily Valentino, and I am a junior at Newton High School. I am involved in my school's Unified Track Team and my school's Best Buds Club, which is a club for kids with special needs and neurotypical kids. This is also the second year I coordinated an event called Night to Shine, which she did single-handedly as a young woman. She's a bright, beautiful young woman who came as Lily's best friend to support her to have the night of her life. This Friday night, May 17, I attended my lifelong friend Lily Doyle's senior prom. The night was great, filled with fun laughter and friendship. Although the night was great, it ended on a sour note. Before we left pictures at my friend Lily's development, the parents told us we would not be picked up prior to 11:15. For those of you who aren't aware, by the way, the district rule was the prom ended at 11:30. Not one limo was to leave before 11:15. I have documented emails from Principal Binger and my case manager Katie Chikolay saying limos will not leave prior to 11:15. They proceeded to the ballroom after they arrived at prom. There were no problems until 10:40. This is when I was told by an aide that we were leaving. Three students had just gone to the dance floor. They were pulled off. I went to go get my friend who was dancing and told her we had to leave. She was confused. Then we gathered our things and stood by the exit of the ballroom. We asked again if we could stay to at least see the prom king and queen announced, and she said, I don't see why not. So one of them actually said, sure. They proceeded to sit back down when the other one walked back and said, what are you doing? We are leaving. We said, we want to see prom king and queen. She said, we are leaving. We gathered our things and stood by the door where some of us got to watch prom king and queen be announced. One of the students went back to her seat at the table crying and tried to show the aides the text messages from the parents that had said they didn't have to leave until minimum 11 o'clock. She was shut down and asked to leave. As she exited, she said, I just want to be treated normally for once in my life. They realized they were missing another student. They saw him with three adults. They later found out that he had been escorted out of the prom, trying to call the limo driver to clarify the time. The parents had given him the limo driver's card, by the way, to do just that, to be in charge, to take care of the girls, bright young man. And so he called to say, wait a minute, something's wrong here. And when he did, one of the district representatives demanded his phone. When he said no, she called security. These students were embarrassed and humiliated and led out of their senior prom in a way that was not befitting an animal. The student goes on to say, he is a very intelligent kid, and just because he has a disability, he was taken advantage of and treated like a second-class citizen. He got in the limo. The whole group was very upset that they didn't get to see the king and queen have their first dance and that they didn't themselves get to dance the last dance. It broke my heart how sad everyone was, including myself. We were ushered out of the prom like animals at the zoo. These kids were taken advantage of, and this situation is a representation of how many kids with special needs are being treated around the world. And you would think the one place they would be able to be themselves and taken care of was their high school senior prom. I urge you to take immediate and severe action to support your students and your community of students with special needs, as they had every single right in this world with no authority given to these representatives to force them to leave early when every single one of them has to stay.
Hi, my name is Kathy Fay. I am professionally a clinical behavior technician. I have been a paraprofessional. I understand what that means to be responsible for a student. It's, I've been nauseated this entire weekend knowing that professionals that represent this district just have not done their job and unfortunately have caused damage and trauma to students who already have it really, really difficult. And I just want to say shame on them. I'm going to read this letter. It is from Madeline, I'm sorry, Madison Hansen. She was there with the group. I'm a junior at Hillsborough High School. I am on the PALS board, a club with students with disabilities, captain of the Rockin Raiders and all-inclusive cheer team, and a founding member of Running Raiders, the Unified Track Team. All of these activities are involved with students with disabilities at Hillsborough. First off, I do these activities to be friends with the students with disabilities. I want to make sure their high school experience is fun and memorable, just like your typical teenagers. The past weekend, I was asked to accompany a senior with Down Syndrome to prom. Without hesitation, I said yes. I made it my mission to make sure she had the best night of her life. Yes, she has a disability, but that doesn't mean that her prom should be any different than anyone else's. Our day started like any other. All high schoolers went to their school. Our minds clouded with the thought of the night ahead of us. Students left early, prepared to prepare for the evening. We spent an hour taking pictures at Lily's house, eating snacks and complimenting each other on how stunning we all looked. They even had a limousine take us to and from the prom. When we arrived, feeling like superstars taking on the world. You could see it in their eyes, the enjoyment of confidence, and here I was becoming a part of their world. I was able to be in their mindset, to be where they were. All was running smoothly up until 10:05, when one of the aides approached me saying, you guys are leaving in 20 minutes. Earlier, multiple parents told me that we were scheduled to leave at 11:15. Again, this goes back to what the expectation is of the evening. Our students need to know that. So one of the students overheard the conversation that they were leaving early and texted the mothers responsible for arranging the ride to and from prom. And confusion spread amongst us like wildfire. Some of us continued to dance and making the best of the night. It was 10:40 when the real chaos began. One of the students with disabilities was calling the limo driver to clarify the pickup time was 11:15 as planned. He was trying to tell the aides how the limo was to come at 11:15 and they were to stay the whole night. Multiple aides were attempting to rip the phone from his hands. The phone had the limo driver on the line. The situation then escalated and security was then called on him. This was hotel security in the middle of senior prom. He was trying to tell the aides that they were supposed to leave at 11:15, like he was told. And then this neuro, another neurotypical student, Emily, and I were begging one of the aides to let us stay, to watch prom king and queen be crowned. She said yes, so they all sat back down again. Before we arrived, she was asking me, so as they were in the limousine, they were excited and asking, who do you think might win? So then we, then they were harshly interrupted by another few seconds later. They were forced out of the room, saying that the adults make the decisions, and they were escorted out in a flash. One girl was trying to sit and stay because that's what the adult parents told her. She was torn from her seat with tears in her eyes. We were pushed into and through the doorway, all of us trying to see who the king and queen were. They got back into the limousine and realized that one student had been escorted out by security. Then they all got back into the limousine. They were crying, very upset. It's devastating to end a really wonderful night on that note. And like I said, we've all just been sick over all of this. So I hope that there's action taken.
My name is Veronica Mays. I'm a longtime resident of Hillsborough. I've been here since March 30, 2003. I've been living here 16 years. I live at 44 Scott Drive. I have two students that went through the school system here, and my daughter is a senior and a special needs student. I'm just going to read my letter that I sent to a bunch of Hillsborough personnel, administrators, principal, that I sent on Saturday morning, afternoon. And I'm just going to read my letter to you. Good afternoon. And I'm sorry, my voice is cracking because I've been under stress since this thing happened Friday evening. Good afternoon. I am both appalled and embarrassed of the treatment of my daughter, her guest, and her school friends from Hillsborough High School, staff, aides at the 2019 senior prom. Last night at East Brunswick Hilton, at 10:06 PM, an aide contacted my limo driver. I set up the limo, my limo driver, to state that they were leaving at 10:40 PM. Per all correspondences from Principal Karen Binger, no one was to leave until 11:15 PM. In most of my emails and correspondence, I put pickup should be around 11:00 PM, thinking that with bathroom breaks and, you know, saying goodbye to friends, that they would be ready by 11:15, which is a normal time for our special needs kids. Our limo driver stated that our contract is loose and is not held to any extra time because they allow for riders to be a few minutes late for pickup, saying goodbye, gathering their things. I tried to avoid what happened last evening, meaning that Friday evening, before it happened, and tried my best to get to the aide's, the aide's name from my case manager, who advised, who was advised by her supervisor not to relinquish the aide's names. Told me she could not give me the contact information for the aides to me. This was prior. I had to receive the names of the aides from a senior prom, from another parent. I was to, I was told to advocate for my child only by my case manager. When I asked the question, should I have other parents contact their CMs to state that they did not want or require an aide to advise their kids, I received no response from my CM. I contacted one aide via email and gave her all of the limo information, pre-prom send-off information, pickup and drop-off times. I was assured that all of the aides had all of our parents' names and telephone numbers, in which I asked again to pass along both my cell phone numbers, my work cell and my personal, to the aide. Yet, in last night's incident, I did not okay for kids to leave at 10:40 PM, nor did I receive a telephone call asking if the kids could leave earlier than the time I had allotted, which was around 11:15, per Principal Binger's correspondence, which is on the prom ticket and all communications from Principal Binger. Our kids demand an apology and some sort of restitution or reciprocity to last night's senior prom. Our kids and the kids in our prom group were made up of neurotypical kids and special needs kids. The aides were dismissing not only what our kids were saying or asking them, but what the neurotypical kids were asking them. What our kids were asking is, can't we just wait until prom king and king are crowned? They were, they were told, no, you have to leave now. I am the adult. How dare you bully our kids? I understand some kids do not, did not even finish their desserts. This is awful. You have to feel the humiliation and embarrassment for these kids. These kids were embarrassed and upset. They were made to leave early from their senior prom. Some kids are not returning to Hillsborough High School next year and cannot go to another senior prom next year, next year, and this is injustice and unfair. If HHS is forcing these aides to work and they do not want to work senior prom, then I think Hillsborough High School should pay to hire someone externally, ask parents to chaperone, or ask another special needs teacher first if they want to take on the child, or, you know, get a professional service. Per my limousine driver, I called him first thing Saturday morning, he stated, it seems like the aides were in a hurry to end the night. our kids with special needs receive extra special treatment and they had the time of their life. Just in case none of the people on your board, people in the email has a child with special needs, it is already difficult having a child with special needs. Discriminating against our kids and belittling them should not be the way someone they trust and look up to should treat them. These kids already have the weight of the world on their shoulders. I would think that their educators, aides, and mentors would stand behind them and treat them with dignity and respect. These kids have feelings, intelligence, and brains like sponges. What do you think they are going to remember most about their senior prom of two thousand and nineteen? Shame on you, Hillsborough High School. Veronica I. Mays.
Marty Mays, forty-four Scott Drive, Hillsborough, New Jersey. I'm not happy. You see what I got to deal with. And I went to bed feeling good about the ceremony that we had prior to it, and then I, when I woke up in the morning, I got the news about what was going on. It's unbelievable. It's an outrage. I researched this thing on my own. The ticket has one time on it. Karen Bingert sent out an email with a different time on it. The, the child study team on various emails have a different time about the prom. How come it just can't be one voice, one message? How hard is that? If you look at the different correspondences, this, nobody knows when this thing ends. One of the other things I wanted to say was that none of, nobody before me spoke about is that here in Hillsborough, our kids are typically put on the bus earlier than the other kids. The buses pull off earlier, and it's a ten-to-fifteen-minute window. But at the prom, it's not a regular school day. This is the prom. If anything, it should have been the way for these kids to stay an extra fifteen minutes beyond everybody else. And then, you talk about aides? I don't know the aides, but what kind of aide is that, that's not really there to help you? You, you're leaving my child because you want to get out early? They got to leave fifteen minutes early because you want to go home on prom night, their prom night? And anybody knows the proper protocol would have been for one of the aides to simply make a phone call. That's why they have our numbers. That wasn't done. So, I don't know about these aides, but then, I don't want an aide if that's how they're going to treat me or my child. So, it's just not a good situation. I mean, these parents here, my wife and these other women and other parents, they're, did anybody see Channel Twelve News a couple of weeks ago where they had the Hillsborough High School highlighted, talking about the different things, the cheerleading that they do, the Rockin' Raiders? I see what they do. I see them getting up in the morning, they go out, they raise money for their pom-poms, they represent Hillsborough at these track meets, with inclusive track meets, no problems with the kids, they run. It's a great thing for them. And this is how you get treated? At, at the minimum, at the very minimum, they owe these girls an apology, at the minimum for what happened at this prom. It's just, it's just an outrage.
You know, I, I can say I probably speak for probably everyone in the room when, when we say that the last thing that anybody wants to see or hear are kids going to the prom and having a great time and then ending it in a way that is very upsetting. And we take your concerns very seriously, Ms. Bingert, and the Special Education Administration is investigating. She has spoken or has communicated with many of you. I, I do want to, I do want to say that, that our district has so many special education teachers, instructional assistants that care deeply for your children and have through many years. We pride ourselves on being inclusive. We pride ourselves on trying to do the right thing all the time for, for these kids. We will get to the bottom of it, but, you know, our, our staff certainly has the, has the right to due process and making sure that we, we find out all the information and all the facts, and, and that's what we'll do, and that's what I promise you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. We have read your letters, and we've taken them very seriously.
Yes, we, we understand. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on any subject? Yes, Ann?
Could I just say to the parents who just spoke, I came tonight because of your letters. I was supposed to be at my own graduation at Seton Hall, but you were more important to me, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I'll take-
I do have, it's not about that, but I, I understand it's ironic that I did want to say something about a symposium that I attended on special education.
Okay.
It was ironic tonight. I had been away in Chicago-
Speak into the microphone.
Can you hear me?
Bring it closer.
I had been away, and I came in at twelve-thirty last night, but I wanted to speak about this symposium. I mentioned it last week. I went last Monday, and after attending the Special Education Symposium, I have a renewed interest in special ed programming and services. On May thirteenth, I hope this is not too long because I'm going to, I want to bring-
That's fine. Go ahead.
On May thirteenth, I had the opportunity to attend the New Jersey School Board's Symposium on Special Education, and I came away with a lot of information and a great interest in special education programming. It was pointed out that the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires states to provide children with special education services as a condition to receive federal funds. And we all know that. Special education laws consist of broad requirements that mandate schools to provide a free, appropriate public education to all students. To date, New Jersey only gets between fifteen and sixteen percent funding, as Dr. Schiff has been telling us about this for a long time now. I think in Hillsborough, we get fifteen point seven percent. Is that right? Funding?
Well, what, what you're quoting is actually the percentage of children in the state who are receiving special education services. We actually are about a point above that, about sixteen percent. But if we were funded for the children that we have, we would receive between one and one and a half million dollars more a year. But that's part of the, the state funding formula that, that needs to be changed.
Well, you know, the federal law had included a commitment to pay forty percent of the average per student cost for every special education student, and as we know, this was not, this has not happened. Recently, the New Jersey School Board's executives met with two of our, of our representatives from New Jersey, Senators Menendez and Senator Booker, about this funding, and they're going to be looking into it, but everyone was quite upset at that particular symposium about the funding for special education students for the, for all the school districts. Unfortunately, special education and the budget is all controlled by, as we all know, the federal government, and in order to save on budget, many school districts have started their own programs, beginning at pre-K and eventually moving up the ladder from elementary to high school. This is shock, this part is shocking to me when they talked about the cost of a student sent, sent out of a district could range from a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. It was pointed out that Berkeley Heights offers a great in-house program, saving their district up to a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars per year. That's something I think that we need to look at and see what they're doing. Perhaps that's something we should maybe as a group do. Another suggestion that was made was to work collaboratively with other districts, and it was also pointed out that Bergen County Special Services offers training throughout the state for the school districts. So, I was hearing a lot of information. I'm only going to give you a partial. I want to bring this to the Education Committee. They develop programs for special education students up to the age of twenty-one, and they will also run programs for the, sorry, for the school district, for the school districts. Of course, not all special education students can be accommodated in, in a district, but a good number can. They also talked about pre-K, and it goes on. I can go on about this and all these different points, but I'm, sadly at points, but I'm not going to. I think I should stop at this point. But their three targeted areas in the schools for training are autism, mental health issues, and dyslexia. They also pointed out that facilities should give strong consideration to completely fencing in the playgrounds as a strong safety measure. They talked also about there could be a larger upfront cost, but in the long run, thousands and thousands of dollars will be saved by the districts by utilizing these special programs that are out there now. This report is not nearly all-inclusive. I just touched on some highlights, and I would like to have the opportunity to share additional information with the Education Committee, and at some point, perhaps, we can have our Director of Special Education-
Sure.
-meet with us in the committee and also perhaps present to our full board at a future Board of Education meeting.
Awesome. Thank you very much for sharing that, Joyce. Okay.
I have just an update, Judy.
Yep.
So, I just want to remind the board that tomorrow is the Somerset County School Board's Association meeting where we'll be talking about advocacy, and so far, Assemblyman Zwicker and Senator Bateman from the Sixteenth District and Assemblyman Peterson from the Twenty-third District will be in attendance. Also, Judy will be receiving her master, no-
Certified board leader.
Certified board leader, so if anybody is able to join us, I'll be there, and I believe Mrs. Stats and Mrs.-
I'll be there.
Oh, awesome. Okay, so we'll actually have a quorum, except that there's multiple boards, so it's not a quorum, or it's not a thing.
To be expected.
Also, I wanted to mention that on Saturday, I was at the Delegate Assembly, and I'd mentioned the resolution that was going to be considered from Weymouth Board of Education, unfortunately failed by sixty-three percent no to thirty-seven percent yes. It was quite contentious. I actually thought it was going to pass quite handily because it was basically saying, you know, "New Jersey School Boards believes in a fair and equitable adequate allotment of state aid," except that there was the wording about, you know, "No, no student should experience hardship as a result of reductions." Unfortunately, then, I think the makeup of that, at the Delegate Assembly, there were a lot of board members from districts who were underfunded, underfunded. So, they were standing to, they basically thought that this was not as transparent as it seemed to us as Hillsborough, so unfortunately, it failed.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that back to us. Are there any other board comments? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you for coming.